Okay, well, why don't we get started, folks? Number one, public works accessible parking downtown. Issue sheet from the engineering departments.
So I'm sure you've had the opportunity to look at the issue sheet that was presented. We've had a request from the Armith Kelsey to establish a accessible parking spot near their office. We are asking as management to consider doing it on the nature of the business on a case-by-case basis, so we're asking to draft up a policy. Some of the concerns that we have are is if we have to provide accessibility parking, we're already having limitations in the downtown parking area. And we believe that the nature of this business wouldn't necessarily be health-related. And we've had a request from tribal health in the past, and we are still in the process of it, to permit a parking spot specifically for accessible parking because they deal with people that are disabled on a regular basis. So what we're asking is to bring forward, to consider case-by-case, and that we bring a policy. What our council wishes on that.
Is that a handicap spot? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
That's okay.
Our concern, though, on the main street is because if you start adding them, there's going to be nowhere to park, period. And we're already having issues.
So, I mean...
They can park on the sides, like, there's several areas in there.
So the nature of this business, I think it's, you know, it makes sense because they obviously have to go do government kind of business, right? So pay their water bill or do whatever. But how many, like, just thinking here, how many other places would have a legitimate excuse similar to this?
You could equip for... Down, you have, just down the road by the Hawaiian, you have businesses there that are health-related services. It could be, you want your income tax done because people are going there to do income tax. It could be never-ending. That's why you would need a policy that would be very, very clear as to what you're going to consider. Health-related, of course, you're going to be looking at something like that, or I would think you would. I shouldn't say "of course."
So in their back, how many spots do they have in their, in the back? Like, I was looking, went by...
In the back, they have seven spots.
Yeah. So they, they need our approval to make one of their back spots?
No, they're asking if we're on our main road.
Okay. Because when I drive by, there usually, there's those trucks that are lined, so, okay, I would, why not use one of those?
And they have side parking on the main road there, too. On the two, two...
And that was the only concern, not that we're against someone establishing it in their own area, but if this is something that comes up and we have to start accommodating every time it's a request, you could add up the spots pretty quick.
Yeah. I mean, not that I'm not into helping, it's just that if you put the one spot there and it's for handicapped, then that doesn't mean they're going to go to the IRM. They're going to be using the, you know, they're going to fill in the spot and go somewhere else, which is fine. But that's not necessarily one spot, it's not going to solve the issue that we have, or the bigger issue of lack of spots.
So what we're saying is we'd kind of like a more clear policy on it, but we'd also like to consider the other one that we have on our plate right now, which is a health facility.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is, um, is, do we have the policies like what Flinflon and Swan River would do? Because I'm just going from memory now, and they both have some uptown, as I recall. Do they have a policy? Can we find out?
For sure we can.
Yeah. Because I'm, I'm almost positive they both have them on their main drives.
So we can, we have the direction to create a policy and bring it back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and like I said, bring it for the other two.
I'm going to declare a bit of a, a conflict here. I mean, again, I'm going to bring it up because my home is backed up against that, so if somebody believes I should leave the room, then I'll leave the room. If somebody believes that it's not that big of a deal, I'll stay and meet them. I don't, I don't believe that it's, have that big of a string influence on it. It's kind of had value to the discussion, yeah.
You have no financial gain, so...
No.
Yeah. At this point in time, Andre, I don't think...
Okay. If it's a purchase, you may want to consider.
Yeah. If, uh, if there's a financial implication that comes out of this, then we'd probably... But right now...
Okay.
We're having a discussion. Okay, so let's go on.
So basically, we had a policy in place that had a high percentage of respondents in the affected area that would need to be in favor of a closure in order to move the process forward. It was determined that it was hard getting the percentage. We were waiting for the numbers to come in before we reviewed the request. So what we're looking at is, we want to amend the walking path closure policy in either option one or two, option one or two. In order to achieve 75% supportive respondents for closure, only 26 of the 34 respondents would have needed to vote yes. 26 would have only amounted to 22, so what we're saying, either 75% of respondents in the affected areas would need to be in favor of the closure. And the outcome is the threshold wasn't achieved, so the process was over. So we're saying it wasn't a very good process. Option two, 60 or 65% of respondents in the affected area would need to be in favor of closure in order to move the process forward. The outcome, the threshold is achieved for two paths, A and B, and overall for the total. The closure process can move to the next step for the next two paths, and all paths depending on how council wishes to interpret the data. So this was quite a convoluted policy. So we want to amend the policy, and I know in speaking, or in the presentation here, they want to amend the policy, but also they want to look at considering closure of option A, lane A, and leave others open. And if you can see with the information that you have attached, your walkway A isn't a very large area, and it still provides access to.
You know what, I'll just speak in general terms of what will happen, and this is why it's key that when we look at this, is the whole picture, is that you'll just, it's, there's not a ton of traffic that's happening there during the day, and we've had residents monitor how many people actually use it. And it's very few, and if you look in the mornings, it's also very few. But if you close one, you could potentially just push traffic to another area. So if you like a walking path A, if you close that alone, you're, you're going to push people into the front through the park because that park doesn't have a fence area, and it's just going to direct whatever activity you have to another area. I really do think you have to look at the whole picture. You know, when you talk about inconvenience and et cetera, when you really do the actual study on it, there's no, there's no real inconvenience, it doesn't add any more time other than that if you run the first half of the trailer, or lawn cresting. It's, so, I mean, I, I think, I would be in supporting that we need to really look at this policy again and how, and how it is, and I don't think that we should, I don't believe we should move forward with any of the closures till we really completely understand what, what would happen. And obviously, walking path A is my walking path, so I, I think that it's, it's, it's something that should happen, but it has to happen.
So you're kind of thinking all over, you know?
Well, I'm not, I don't want to speak for other people, but what I'm saying is that if you, if you, you could potentially just direct traffic somewhere else. And it's, it's really a big picture thing and what the purpose is. And you have to go back to what we, what they were there for in the first place. They were there because there was a slip that would be built down in that area, and people needed to get to school. And now it's really not there, and they don't, they're not maintained through the winter, nobody shovels them, it's a little beaten chicken pad. Most kids walk down the sidewalks, and it's really the odd time you see some not-so-good stuff happening, not by children, but by people at 2:00 in the morning. So...
So is it fair to say, bring back revised policy to reflect the impact on the entire area, so that it has least amount of redirecting traffic to other areas?
So the data results, I'm just trying to get the math in my head here. So total surveys, 118?
Yeah.
That's how many went out? Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah? And 34 people responded?
Correct.
So what's this first box? That's where I'm confused. Walkway closure.
Because what they said is there was three different walkways. So 24 were yes, 22, 20, and they answered yes and no, and then how many were in favor?
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay, I get it.
It's a, it's a convoluted process.
Well, it's the percentage on surveys, that's, that's the problem. If you, if you look, it just, who was for and against.
Part of your biggest concern is most people, if they don't really care, they're not going to fill out a survey, but yet they're included in the number.
Yes, that's the biggest issue. So, you know, that, that group of residents have went through a lot over the last, like, last number of years now, and they don't even like talking about it, and, you know, it hasn't really been that big of an issue as much as it used to be, maybe, but the, you know, the hoops that have been dropped, jumped through here by offering a purchase land, coming with solutions, not, not just asking somebody to do something, and continue to throw, like, now this new survey, and maybe it was missed, to put this, it's, it's, it would never, ever happen because people don't physically go to the mail and mail letters anywhere. That's not how it works.
So what would you suggest, Andre? You're right there.
I suggest that if you are really opposed against it, you send a letter, and if you not oppose against it, or you don't send a letter in, then you don't, like Randy said, you don't care, and it's good.
I think that's sadly what happens. If people don't care, they don't respond, yes or no. They don't.
But we're considering that as a no. If you don't respond, we're considering it as a no in the current procedures or policy. I'm not sure that's effective.
But, I mean, I would go even a step further, and we'll get rid of the, the procedure through our community, the whole. We can maybe ask Sam or whoever else for more information, like, I mean, some of these paths, not just walkway A, I mean, what's the point? Right? So you, no one goes through there, you go around, what is it, one house, and you're at the same park that's there. It serves zero purpose, other than it's a quick getaway at 2:00 in the morning or wherever else. And there are other, other ones that serve again, zero purpose, and they're not maintenance, not, let alone in the winter, they're not maintenance in the summer at all. There's one up from, from mine, you wouldn't even know it exists in the summer, for the trees that are growing up between it. And I think, you know, to me, walkway A should be closed, and just like any other thing that we do at council, it, we make a resolution, and people can show up to council and either support or oppose. We can listen to their sides of the story. We can also ask for the letters to come in and go forward with it. I know, over the years, people have bought the property or proposed to buy it. I, I, again, I see zero purpose for, for that walkway A. And I, I use that park quite a bit with my kids, and why you wouldn't just go down the sidewalk, I have no idea, but, anyway.
Are there any statistics on what's happened down there? Any numbers?
Do you know, if I can speak on this, sadly, the numbers, the community residents have gotten tired of phoning the RCMP. That was part of the, one of the restrictions that we had at the beginning. The people don't phone the RCMP because they know they're not going to respond, so it was very difficult to get stats. We know that there's things going on there, but we don't have numbers. So when we report stats to say what is the, like, what's actually going on, what's the vandalism, most people don't report it. They just paint over it, or they do what they can on their own because they don't make the call, which I understand.
And they also just kind of go on, but I think this is part of the beautification part of our town, because, I mean, spray paint has been on there for how long now?
Well, again, it's, it's, it's almost that definition of insanity, right? So you like to be proud of that, but every time you turn around, you're doing it over again, like, you kind of give up, right? And that's what you don't want to happen. And so I would venture to say that no residents in that area walk down this walking path, ever. To do the lawn or maintain the fence or, because it's, it's just, it doesn't matter because the next day they'll do something else in the, after repair or etc.
So this has been going on for nine years?
Well, it could have been going on longer than that.
Like, it says here, nine years. So, like Trevor says, if you put it out there to the people, and we do it as, as a resolution or whatever, and they have to come and say whether they want it closed or not. The surveys haven't worked. Nothing's worked for them, so you have to come at it with a different attitude or a different way of doing it. And if they're not going to send you the written letter for a survey, then have them come to council and say yes or no. And then we make a resolution to close them or keep them open. But you shouldn't take this to resolve this, like this.
I'm thinking, too, as a person that has nothing to do with any of those walking paths or the walking path that goes all the way around our town, all the way around the community, that if we don't address this one properly, we're going to have issues with everybody down on, what is it, Paul Avenue or Bell, that has a walking path going behind their house and a bush directly behind that, that's having their fences painted as well, that's having problems with people dealing with their areas as well. So are we at a situation where we're willing to start closing down all walking paths?
My opinion is, if we have a problem, and I've said this before, then we should deal with it. And if that's one of the solutions and the problem somewhere else in town, we should have be saying, "I don't want to fix this problem because I might have to fix somebody else's problem." The problem's a problem, and my problem is, and if we've got to fix it, we've got to fix it. Now, you know, you can do a bunch of other things there, too, but we have to come up with a solution. We can't just say, "Oh, I don't want to do this because then I'm going to have to do it over there, too." If it's a problem over there, then we should do something over there as well.
I believe your biggest problem with this policy was just the way the wording was with the percentage.
Yeah.
To me, if you don't respond, you're not included in that amount. If, if that many percent say yes, and out of the number that actually voted on it...
What do you think, Carrie?
I agree with what Randy was saying.
Which is?
We need to change the policy.
Change the policy? So do we change the policy before we move forward with the resolution to close the lanes? Or do we move forward with the resolution to close the lanes and then change the policy?
Let's get rid of the policy completely, and, I mean, that's why we're here as counselors, to look at information that's presented and, and make decisions. And, I mean, I don't see any purpose for why, I'm not talking about all the walkways, I'm talking about walkway A. I see no purpose for walkway A. Uh, you know, if other person's having a problem, I'm saying going to close that one down. For walkway A, I don't see any purpose for why that is there. So if someone can give me a reason why it's there, I mean, you go out of walkway B here, go around one house, you're on a sidewalk, there's, you know, you're still crossing a road regardless if you're going through, and you're going down an extra minute and a half. I've done it many times. I actually prefer to go around so I don't have to walk over glass, and I don't have to ask my, again, my daughter to ask, "What does that mean on the fence?" So I go around. So, so walkway A, I think we should close. How do we, so get rid of...
That was the recommendation, is to close walkway A.
Yeah.
And to leave one open so at least schoolchildren can access.
Yeah.
But, again, if we want to have a policy in place for the others, do we just change the threshold?
I chose, two years ago, not to use walkway A anymore. It didn't have to do with my safety or my dog's safety when I was walking her, but it had to do with the maintenance of it. I didn't want to step in, and I didn't want my dog to have to step in the garbage and the feces. It would, it, walkway A is a disaster.
So it sounds like the consensus is to move forward with the ending of walkway A. Am I right in that? So we should present a resolution to council, notify...
Are, can I, are we following the policy, or we're not following the policy to call closure A? Because this, this is just to see if it's going to public hearing? Because to close...
There's a lot more to this process.
Okay, so we'll follow the policy with the intent of closing A and notify the people of saying...
Can we bring back that policy again for review, and do you want to consider removing that threshold?
Um, I, personally, I think we should move forward with it as is.
Okay.
With A, and then as A evolves, we make our changes as needed.
Okay.
And the policy, though, is, is not that. Like, it's not, it would never work in any type of voting mechanism you have up there. It's, it's doomed to fail and will never, ever be a real, or picture of what you've got up there. So I think, I still believe that you're going to have to revisit that policy if you're going to make it effective and be really moral to want. Because, just because guys won't send stuff in, that's, this is 2018, guys, like, people don't, most people don't mail letters anymore.
Especially if they really don't care.
Yeah.
So do, does a door-to-door survey need to happen?
I think if you don't mail it in, then you really didn't care.
That's right.
If you're going to, if you really cared, you'll take the time to go down there and do it.
Just base your decision on the people that actually respond.
Exactly.
And that's all I'm asking to do.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so we'll move forward?
Yeah.
All right.
So we received a letter, or an email from Crystal Hockelak requesting a meeting with council to discuss the lagoon issue. So we need to pick a date as to when it would be best for a presentation with council.
So the resolution we passed this evening was seeking a second opinion, I believe, Andre?
Yeah.
So would it be worthwhile to have the meeting after we get that opinion?
I mean, if Crystal wants to come and educate us, I have no issues dealing with, talking about that. But what we're looking for, what our discussion was around, engineering support and making sure we have the right solution, not whether we specifically know all the limits of what's in there. So if she wants to come and explain the limits and where we may be good for us, what I think we're looking for as well, though, is to see what, what difference, or where the difference is, or are there different options other than the JR and Cousins option?
Would you consider actually having Water Services Board have a discussion with us also? Before spending the money?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I mean, again, it's whatever information we can have in front of us. I mean, I'm not sure about everybody else, but for me, to spend $14 million, I kind of got to feel comfortable, and I got to see some passion behind really needing this. And when you ask the question and nobody's jumping up and down and climbing up the wall, I don't see the passion saying, "This has to happen today." No, I, I get it, Crystal or the government thinks that. We're not, we're not saying we're not doing it, but we, we, our new council, we need to understand the world. We need to understand if we commit $14 million to somebody. And so, yeah, I'm open to, I mean, I'm open on that, hearing Crystal and listening to that. For Water Services Board, I'd be welcome, I would welcome that discussion.
Because that may help moving forward, instead of maybe spending that money on another opinion, to even talk to Water Services Board, to even know what more questions we want to ask for that other opinion?
Um, yeah, but I still think it's a pretty cheap act to, to get somebody to find an expert, and I would like to have some, I'd like to see the option of experts that we select to send them our data. I mean, we have all the data, we don't need, we're not asking them to design a system because somebody's already doing that. We're saying, "Hey, here's what our outflow looks like, here's what situation we're in today, here's kind of the proposals we have, what do you think? Is there any other ways we could do this to meet the regulations so that we're not, so we are protecting the environment?"
The only thing, and I, I agree, the only thing is, is that, and she, she mentions it here, is that I've got a feeling that I don't think they care what our levels are, is the fact that we only did stage one of a possible three, and they don't care. So if we, if we, if we went in and scored whatever for the next, I think they just think, "Look, you're in violation over however many years because you never followed through your original plan. Now, don't tell me you're going to try and, you know, put in some sort of mats and this and this and this, and spend $1 million and think you're going to go and last another 50 years. You're doing it no matter what." That's kind of the feeling I got. So I...
And granted, that might be them, but, so, I guess, how I look at it, too, though, is there's certain regulations we have to meet, and, and, and those regulations are firm numbers, or there's some sort of firm condition that we have to be within to be able to operate a treatment program. And if whatever we have in place, or whatever we can come up with and meet that, those regulations, and that there's some long-term security and way of dealing with any of the upsets that we have, I'm not sure that we can tell us that.
Oh, and, and I agree. I'm just thinking from the tone of the letter and what she's written, is that we're in, we're not in compliance because we didn't do our three stages.
Yeah.
So, and no matter what we do, we can put in a special chemical that's going to kill everything, they don't care. You are not in compliance because you didn't do stage three af, in the 1981, you stopped at stage one, and now for your population, you should have this, this, and this, you don't? I don't care what your levels are, I want you to do and make what you're supposed to make.
And we're going out and kicking the tires of the new car. That's exactly what we're doing. So we're going out there, we're going to do something, we're going to make sure, but I'm not sure I'm buying a Chevy, I might be buying Ford.
Yeah.
So I got to go out there and check that out.
Oh, I, I agree, I agree.
And so, you know, for them to be, I don't think that it's, it's the message that we should be sending, Crystal and Water Services or whatever the boards, it's not that we're not doing anything, it's not that we don't care, but we just got to make sure that it's such a big, we have one company that gave us one plan, and it's $14 million, and if you're going to spend $14 million investing a few more thousand dollars to make sure you got the best, is the right thing to do. And, you know, I, I think we do that ourselves when we buy a vehicle, go and buy any significant purchase. You don't just take whatever that guy said the first time and run with it. You're going to kind of ask.
Do we have a date? When the law...
Graham's got a question.
Oh, it's okay, I can wait for...
So, so really, maybe what we should do is like you said, have the meeting with Water Services Board first.
I'd have it with both of them.
And then have the, all the data from them to go, and then have the meeting with Crystal after.
But at the end of the day, though, guys, you still should do that.
Oh, yeah.
So even if it comes up and says, "Yeah, guys, we have to do all this," we should still be getting an opinion on what kind of car you're going to buy.
I think...
But it may help us with having Water Services Board to ask more questions we normally wouldn't have, is all I was saying.
Do we know the last date of, the last auto audit sample was taken?
I don't know about that.
They take it monthly. Uh, the last one was, I actually wrote my file in, but the, at the end, they're rounded, like, there's no, I don't know what... The phosphorus one, like Andre's saying, the phosphorus one, no, or lower than it is for a period of time, but there's other chemicals or other things that are happening. So, and it's a monthly type thing, and they did de-treatment, like, they're treating it with chlorine on the discharge, and that is very high, so... Um, yeah, so let's have the meeting with Water Services Board first, then get them to do the presentation, because they're the drivers behind JRCC, and then have the meeting with Crystal after and get it all in place.
And I'll give Crystal a call, I know Crystal, like, I mean, it's, it's, again, we're not trying to say we're not doing something.
My concern, and I agree with most everything you guys have said, right? My concern is the, is the tone of the letter. You know, as she has said, "The town of the Paw is currently in violation of their license and regulatory limits by continuously releasing a pollutant to the environment. The town of the Paw may be charged for each and every day that a pollutant is being released." Well, our last fine was $25,000, and we, I think we need to have a very solid timetable and one that she is agreeable to, because if she is the one who's going to be finding us, we need to make sure that she is on side with us while we investigate this. Because in the event that she says your penalty is $5,000 a day, I don't know what the maximum is, but that's going to chew up a lot of cash in a hurry. So we've asked for a second opinion in our previous meeting tonight, so we need some clear timetables, some clear timelines that Crystal is agreeable with. And if she isn't agreeable with, then she will force our hand, and we will have to get this done.
No, and, but, again, it's, isn't it up to us to put it as fast as possible and get this second opinion? Because it doesn't matter... Because it doesn't matter, it's not gonna make any, if we said today, okay, we're gonna go ahead and do it then, you guys okay to spend, to tell what JR Cousins says to spend fourteen million dollars? And I'm not.
No, not without the discussions, Andre, right? But there has to be a very clear timetable because otherwise Crystal will just start finding us.
Yeah, I know, but this is the whole process of being on time council again, I guess, because if this was in my real life, we would've already just called, we would've gathered the information, sent it to a cons, a consultant, said, hey, what do you think? And he would say yes, no, and then we would create it, but we have these blocks that we have to wait.
Yeah.
So how do we make it...
You do, you have a tendering process, you have a lot kinda stuff, so...
And just keep in mind, right? In the eyes of the province, this is probably the fourth council to deal with this.
Yep.
They want it resolved.
So maybe we should just, like you said, have a call with Crystal and tell her why we were, you know, moving forward, dealing with that.
And I think the sooner we call her...
Yeah.
The better, just because, and I think whoever calls her, you say, look, just if you hear that we're getting a second opinion, this is what we're doing, this is what we're, we're not by no means thinking we don't need to resolve the issue, or we're trying to find a, you know, a twenty thousand dollar fix to this, we're gonna fix it, but we wanna make sure we have all the information.
So what would be the harm, sorry, may I ask?
Yeah.
So what would be the harm in setting up a meeting with Water Services Board the first week of January as soon as we get in on this?
Sure.
Then call her in and say, hey, this is what we're doing? Yeah, that would be even better, if you can get them all at one time. And just say, here's what we're doing, we've passed a resolution for this, we're moving forward, we just wanna make sure we're doing, being fiscally responsible for our community. We are not saying no, we just wanna get a better understanding, but have them both at the table and start the process with tendering out for getting that second opinion. But this way everybody's in a loop and let's do it. Why can't we do it the first week or, or the second week? Get it over with, get it done.
Absolutely, do it the first week, right away. Let's do it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, okay, planning and development, sale of lot twenty-three at the lake.
Sorry, I'm on the stuff. Uh, we had someone that had purchased a lakefront lot and they've decided, or I think they purchased another home, so they wanna sell their property to someone else. Under our agreement, if they wanna pass that on, it has to be approved by council. So what they're saying is they would like to request that, what we're asking for is a resolution that would authorize the transfer of the lot sale from Harms to Knutson and Myers, subject to the conditions of the current purchase agreement. We're not giving them anything more, we're just saying, hey, you're carrying on with this agreement as was and it's all at their expense.
I was, one question I have, they don't say in here, unless I missed it, uh, how much they're paying for it?
No, they could turn around and sell it for whatever, it's really their business.
Well, I don't...
I understand we do know, but...
I don't necessarily think it is just their business though, because if they sell it for twenty dollars, then, then where does that for market value? Like we already went to a thousand, so I'm gonna, like it kinda does...
It wouldn't be a legitimate sale, number one, if it's a twenty dollar sale.
Or whatever.
My understanding is these people pretty much sold it for the purchase price, what it cost for clearing, cause they've already cleared part of the lot.
But shouldn't we know what they're selling it for?
Do you know what anybody else sells a property for? Like, I don't know, I'm asking, I'm not being...
Uh, yeah, I mean, we kinda do when they do the, when you do your...
Buy, buy, hurt places is our business, cause it's not ours, right?
Well, it is, because we do the taxes, right?
We don't know the sale price.
No, we don't know the sale price, but when you do your assessments and the assessment branch comes in and you do the whole thing, you kinda do know, because all of a sudden we'll be sitting here saying, oh my god, we're gonna change the mill rate because all the prices in town have gone down to...
They do.
Exactly.
That's what happens.
Yeah, well, why does that happen?
Because someone gets a deal on their house.
Well, exactly. So if you don't have any idea that that's happening, how do you...
We don't.
Your assessment is based on your surrounding areas though, is also, right? Doesn't matter if you sell your property for a thousand dollars or five thousand dollars, the assessment on the property is the same as the ones next door for the size of the property. It's not assessed on what you sold it for, it's assessed on what they assess the value of the property at. So if you could sell it for forty thousand dollars, if you found somebody that was willing to buy it for that, that doesn't mean it's assessed at forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but they take the comparable prices when they're doing the assessments, correct?
Sometimes, some of them are not valid sales. Like if I bought a lot from Jen, that was probably worth forty thousand dollars and, well, she's my friend and she showed me money for this, it's not a value, it's not a legit cost.
So we just met with the...
Right, it's assessment branch that determines that.
We just met with the assessment branch and they determined it, so are we going to have to go back to the table again with them because somebody else is going to...
Yeah, in, in my opinion, the sale should be denied. I don't think it should be proceeded with. It was my understanding, and I've been told this many times, that the one thousand dollar sale was a one-off special event. It was not supposed to represent market value. These lots were, were blown out, they were blown out. So I, I've heard through my work that the value, that what they're selling it for would be more than they paid for it, but not significantly more. So you all have sat through a board of revision now and you've all experienced it, you heard the assessor talk about how she reduced the assessment from five, fifty thousand to forty-five thousand.
And why was it?
Um, for...
Because they sold it for a thousand dollars and that's exactly why.
No, 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 it was from other sales. But when the, when the sampling year comes up to the next board of revision, all of those one thousand dollar sales will be valid sales. Now, we're going to have residents sitting in the audience wanting to appeal their assessments on their property to a thousand dollars. Now, we could take the position that that was a one-off special event until we accept a sale like this where we say they're only worth five thousand dollars or three thousand dollars. So I don't, it was my understanding in any history I've ever had with the town, if you don't proceed with it, you don't have the right to sell it, you return it back to the vendor. And I think that this should go back into our inventory.
May I ask that we get a legal opinion, cause our agreement says kind of contrary to that?
If that agreement says contrary to that, then we're gonna have a further discussion because prior to becoming the mayor, I made the town aware of the flaw in their agreement.
Yep.
And that was on the advice of a lawyer. So if that wasn't handled properly, then we need to have even a bigger discussion.
I think we need to bring the agreement back.
Yeah, I don't believe they should have the right to be able to sell that when it was a one-off special event.
So what, just, let's ask the question, what about the investment they made into the land of clearing?
They have an obligation to finish it within two years.
So if they finished it, then sold it?
But they didn't continue with their actual development as per the entire agreement?
I'm just trying to, from their side, if you're looking at it.
There's an argument to be made that they've caused harm to the land, that a future potential purchaser may not want. So in my opinion, the sale should be denied, unless it wasn't a one-off special event.
So what's our direction?
Denied?
Yeah.
Okay. Cameron McKay, extension request.
So if you recall, we, in previous council, we had sent Mr. McKay a letter because his property was built not in accordance with the existing zoning bylaw of the day, so we had sent him a letter asking him to provide us with a remedy of how he's gonna fix the issue. We've been working, as a working group at the council table here with a couple of members and some of the members from that area. So we have sent a letter to the province requesting an alteration to the setback. So if this were to actually be approved through the province, he wouldn't be required to move anything. So I've asked him to make sure that he gets a request for an extension to provide that plan, cause that plan is gonna cost him a lot of money. And if we can, like if this moves forward and he's gonna meet those requirements, why would we do that? So I'm at least saying until March thirty-first and hopefully by that time, we would have a resolve here. So we would require a resolution to do that.
Road salt tender.
We're requesting the tender by Edmund, he's the low bid. He also was the provider last year and we had no issues. So we're recommending that we approve the tender submitted by him for road salt in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven twenty-nine fifty. And we would require a resolution.
Any questions, anybody? No? Okay, okay. Uh, janitorial tenders.
Uh, what we're doing, it's a time of year when we're putting out tenders again for the cleaning of our office building. So we would require a resolution to accept a tender, uh, there was three bids, one was disqualified, one was received late. So we have a tender for eleven thousand, two thirty-two a year for the cleaning of our buildings. We believe, Graham, you might even wanna chime in on this, we believe that this is very cost-effective for the municipality and we're reducing the number of cleanings, are we not?
Correct. So historically, the clean of this building, the garage, have been done under contract. I think it's been daily. This year, we thought maybe we'd try something else, we were gonna change, I've never worked at an office building that had daily cleanings, I thought that was kinda strange. So yearly, weekly, so we reduced the number to just a weekend job to bring the cost down, which it has. Same bidder on both. It's not a word to cook and she's currently doing the contract at the airport and they were very happy with it, so.
Is there, is there any, if it is in fact cheaper, as you are saying, is there any reason why we're not doing that to rank in the wellness center?
Cleaning?
Yeah.
I suspect with the wellness center, there's probably like daily activities that have to be going on going throughout the day where you're cleaning up the equipment and whatnot? I don't know, like again, that would be something Amber maybe can answer that. Uh, I don't think there's a system, you've got a contract for them, I don't know why they're, like again, I don't know why they couldn't be human.
The people that are there right now, that are employed there, they wipe down all the machines, like steady right through.
So maybe, maybe that's part of the staff duties for the front counter staff?
Yeah.
I wonder if they're integrated that well?
Well, maybe.
Deals about duty maintenance stuff, or at least they're good when I work there.
Yeah, they do have, like, the power engineer or whatever.
The rain, I mean, uh...
Maybe they're doing a little bit of that work. I know we share one guy with the pool for our boiler and he goes half-day, half-day, so I don't think he has the time to put into...
So we have cleaning staff at the rank in the arena?
The attendants in the rank, yes.
Rank attendant, and what about in the wellness center?
They have actual cleaners, like specific cleaners to the wellness center, when they need help in the arena, they'll go over and they'll help over there too.
So what's the difference in cleaning the civic center or cleaning the wellness center?
I agree, because you have so many people going through there and you have public washrooms that have to be looked after, shower rooms, things like that, that have to be cleaned on a regular basis to meet the protocol for some service.
Savitation.
But we could still hire them on a contract basis, I guess is what you're getting at, just for a longer period of time.
Yeah, the only difference is, is that that was unionized positions there, it was actual positions, whereas here it was always contract.
Probably at one time it used to be a unionized position here, many years ago.
I don't ever recall it being, no.
No?
Been in the building for twenty-one years and no.
No, yeah.
It's always been a contract. Cause it was a contract always.
Contract.
And when it came to the wellness center, that was part of the spiel of you're gonna need it regularly and why would we contract it out when they could be employees and...
I wonder if we should ask Amber for her opinion on what she thinks on this? Cause if, if it's cleaning, then if we can save some money in cleaning, who doesn't wanna save some money?
Can we, can we proceed with this though? Cause this one's a tender, so are we okay with this one?
Yeah.
There's also gonna be a little bit of a gap until this is passed, like by an actual resolution. So can we get her to clean that first couple of weeks or whatever it may be and pay her for what this contract will be in January?
Yeah.
So to be clear, the cleaning will occur on a weekend?
Correct.
So then you have Monday to Friday, who kinda picks up the slack in there?
There really isn't a lot of mess Monday to Friday in this building, like it's an office building, right? I mean, other than maybe mopping the front entrance in the dead of winter, it's really not that bad. I think the garage contract's a little bit different, I think she's coming in two or three times a week.
Yeah.
But again, it's not daily like it was. So it is, it is a reduced...
So what do they clean there?
What do they clean at the garage?
Yeah.
All the bathrooms, the hallways, mopped floor, sweep.
And the nature of that place is pretty, I mean, insipid here.
They, they don't.
Why don't they don't?
But it's not in their job description either, right?
Could it be in their job description?
You'd be hiring another guy for it, to do that job, right? Everybody who...
Hundred, hundred, hundred percent you're allowed?
Well, you, you would take one of your laborers or whoever and put in your job description. The next person that gets hired is, they only got a little area to speak of, yes.
I did, I did look into this a little bit when I came here, because I thought it was obviously under contract and I'm sort of surprised that the union allowed us to do this contract here but not for all of us. The cost to have an employee do the same job is much higher.
Oh, yeah. Fine, definitely.
Part of the deal though with keeping them, or for not keeping them, it didn't matter whether they reunioned or not at the process here, was there wasn't enough work for them here. That was one of the reasons why it was contract.
But it had to, like, the shop...
Unless you don't add any more people and you add duties to fully utilize them.
We did look at sharing at one point to use one cleaner from over there and then you had to provide vehicle and everything else, that's where we kinda got away from it.
I think you're referring to just an employee at the room, at the garage.
I realize you're talking about an efficiency thing now and I really just have no comment on that, because that's not something I can add to.
Well, no, like, like the garage is just the front area and the washer. Anyplace that we went through is a clean by anybody.
There's the upstairs and the laundry room.
Okay, so if we're going to amend a job description, we'll need the union's participation in thinking? Okay, so why don't we put this down for our January, February discussions?
But in the meantime, I'll get an opinion from Amber and...
Yeah, ask Amber to come up with an opinion, cause I think she has one. Clearwater Lake Social Club lease.
Tendering.
Did we miss that? Oh, I'm sorry, did I skip one?
Yeah, yeah, missed one.
Oh, tendering, okay.
So this was, I think, kinda brought up in passing before about changing the, we're amending the policy to change procurement threshold. So what they're going is from a hundred thousand down to seventy-five and from two fifty down to two hundred. So this is for any major construction and service contracts. So we just had to make an amendment to our policy.
Uh, so does, this all relates to the purchasing process, right?
Yeah, to the, the trade agreement stuff that we talked about previously.
Um, I would like to have a special committee meeting on this whole issue, cause it, there's a lot to talk about. And I don't think that we can really just resolve it here in one night. So maybe we could set a night in January sometime and bash this one about.
Can we still proceed with just this for now? Because this is coming into place January first.
Sure, as long as it doesn't impede any other discussions.
And we'll bring it back. Yeah, we'll definitely bring it back, but just to make sure we're in compliance.
Yep. All right, Clearwater Lake Social Club.
So we've been without an agreement for the social club for quite some time now and they've asked for a lease. Any of the renovations that have been provided in that building have been solely at their expense. So they wanna have a long-term lease because they're saying, you know what, we're putting money into this and that's basically where we're at. It's the same as other leases, the square footage that they play, that's a taxation.
Personally, I, I don't disagree they need a lease, right? I don't disagree. But to, to basically sign a forty-year lease, it to me is a bit long.
So instead of a twenty, what would you prefer?
I, I would go five-year terms with options to renew, up to twenty years. God, if it's forty years, I'm sure I'll be dead, the mayor of the day, I'll be wondering what they were doing.
Okay, I can take it back to them.
Council orientation, Way to Go.
Way to Go Consulting is going to be up here doing our assessment and our efficiencies on our engineering department. These guys also provide specific training for orientation. Normally this would cost us probably thirty-five hundred dollars. He's gonna be... Normally, this would cost us probably $3,500. He's gonna be here, and he said he could probably do this for, like, $675 in the evening. I think this would be a prime time for us to have a sit-down, and at least it's coming from another party, it's not necessarily coming from me. And if you look at the orientation session that he has designed here, um, I think this is a very good bang for a buck.
Any discussion? I, personally, I'm not really interested, truthfully. Uh, I don't feel the money's well spent, but if you guys want to do it, there's a lot of new counselors, then by all means, let's do it.
I think it would be helpful, to be honest with you, if it's, you know, $600, that's, it might make us a little bit more effective, but. I'm all about learning.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah.
Carrie?
Sure. I think so.
Trevor?
Doesn't matter to you, four, four to one.
I feel like if, if there was a packet, like, more of a package than just this one letter, then we could go through it more so, and, and, I don't know. To me, there's just not enough.
He was just giving an overview of what he would provide. Yeah.
Is there a date?
15th through 16th.
January 15th through 16th.
I could ask him to provide a prepackage to review.
I think that would be beneficial to that week.
I'm busy the 15th. I just updated my calendar, I just did this morning.
I can't remember what the hell I'm doing next, nevermind.
So I had to start getting it in. 16th is our end day.
December?
Uh-oh, Chamber, I've got the AGM.
Chamber, 15, here, 16.
Yeah, I'm busy. 14th is committee of the whole, so. But that doesn't mean you guys can't proceed without me.
16th is Chamber, Carrie.
Yeah, it's the AGM.
Yeah.
So the 15th? 15th is the library, but it'd be done by the.
So January 15?
Sure.
What's the timeline again?
Five till nine?
I won't be there.
There's Walker, but it's 12:50.
That's a Tuesday?
Yep.
Can't make a goal rush or something.
Goal rush? It's on Tuesday now?
Okay.
So we're looking at the 15th?
You guys are looking at the 15th?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, closure of the arena at noon to students.
This was your request, and I've been.
Then you asked her to be here.
Yeah.
Remember, you, you had asked some concerns about the whole arena issue and what was going on?
Well, I mean, my only concern is, is that we have a business that's operating in there that used to generate revenue, and, uh, and we've taken away that operating hours. But the other big concern I had is that, uh, I guess my first concern was really around this, if employees are actually being assaulted. Uh, that's a huge health and safety zone, and we, whether it's due to a concession only or something else, we need to, I'd like to understand what we're doing to protect our employees.
I wish I'd have known a little more of what your request was, because I would have brought Amber here, um, to speak on it a little more. But we have a policy in place that basically about our personal safety. So there's an investigation that is, has been done. Today was my first day back, I didn't look into the investigation, I was concerned in getting my meeting together.
No, I, well, I guess my first question was, is that, I, I think I did ask in an email or something if we'd called the RCMP.
Yeah.
And so I think our response was, it's been, I was curious.
With our policy, correct. So part of the policy is contacting RCMP if there's injury, doing an investigation with anybody we can, and basically, how are we gonna prevent this from moving forward? If you want, we can provide a copy of the policy.
Uh, yeah.
So, okay, so we, we closed because there was an incident?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, was there more than one? Was there several?
There, in that week, there was two different incidents.
In five days or two days or?
It was in two days.
Two days. And so are we closed now just forever?
Just at lunchtimes, and I understand the option was, um, to have you provide security for the hour.
Just to minimalize it?
Great.
Okay, so obviously this happened on December 5th. Unfortunately, me and my husband were out of country at that time, so we were, we weren't actually here to kind of, you know, to investigate what had happened. Um, this incident could have happened anywhere. It could have happened at the school, it could have happened at Crump Box, it could have happened anywhere. I mean, kids are kids, they're gonna do what they're gonna do anywhere regardless of what's gonna happen, right? Unfortunately, it did occur at the arena. Um, I, as far as I was aware, um, and videos that I've actually seen of this particular incident, um, it occurred in the parking lot. So my first question is, one, why did the arena staff go outside and intervene in the first place? Um, that, that, that to me, you know, should have probably been something that the RCMP should have handled at that time. Um, I mean, of course, you don't want to see people fighting, and, and if you're, you're capable of, of, you know, preventing it, then fine. But to me, that particular staff didn't necessarily have to deal with that, especially when it wasn't occurring directly in the facility. Um, my next, my next concern is, is the revenue portion of, of it for us. Um, you know, our revenue has dropped down $600 to $700 on a weekly basis. It's been two weeks now for us that we've been closed. So, um, in the event that, okay, everybody decides that we are no longer gonna be open, um, we would just request that maybe our rent be amended in the, in the future, that, that, you know, that we aren't able to open again at noon hour. But as I said before, this, this incident could have occurred anywhere. And, and unfortunately, we weren't here, we couldn't really investigate into what happened, or, or really speak for ourselves at that time. You know, it was, I had just simply gotten an email saying, hey, you're closed, and this is what happened. So, I, I mean, I didn't really, like I said, I didn't really have the opportunity to deal with it until we had gotten back, and it was already decided then that the facility was gonna, or the concession was gonna be closed.
This is the first time I've heard of this in the parking lot.
Yeah, no, there's been actual video of it that I've seen, and I could show it to you, that it, that it occurred in the parking lot.
Um, do you, uh, if you reopen, have you ever had a problem inside during lunch hour? Have you ever?
Like, when we've had, like, what we've done is, we normally have two staff, we have one person cooking and one person helping to take orders. Um, you know, to have additional people there is a little much, because, I mean, it's one hour out of the day. You know, one hour that the staff have to kind of really keep an eye on these kids and watch what they're doing. Um, personally, I don't feel it's a big issue, because like I said, it's one hour out of the day. Um, I mean, if we're there afterwards, we clean up, we clean up ourselves as well. If there's a spill, we'll clean it up, we, we contribute in that sense. But I mean, kids are kids, right? We, they're gonna be messy, they're, they're good at stuff like that. But, um, I just feel, like I said, it, it was a little bit unfair to us, because we weren't, we weren't here to kind of really investigate and, and kind of see what happened, or, or even try to make that attempt to fix it.
If there was a fight to break out, what would you do?
I would obviously call the RCMP first thing, right? I mean, would you say in the evening, if there was a fight between parents, are you gonna kick out my air hockey because of it? Do you know what I mean? It's just something that happened, and unfortunately, we just, we just can't, we couldn't control it at that time.
So we've closed the arena at lunchtime. What's our plan going forward? Are we closed forever now at lunchtime, or what's the?
That's why it would have been awesome, had I known what the questions were gonna be, because I would have invited Amber. But it was my understanding that if there was someone to be able to be provided, to provide some sort of, uh, security during that hour, that of course you would be permitted to continue. Maybe I'm incorrect on that.
Well, my concern is, why would we hire additional security when you have two to three staff members that are there, that are paid employees there, that could easily be monitoring these kids?
What's up?